Call the meeting to order and could I get roll call, please?
Commissioner Laird.
I am deeply present.
Commissioner Milne.
Here.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Chairman Frill.
Here.
Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Could I get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nicolason, second by Commissioner Laird. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of notice of application of renewal of liquor license, full retail liquor license, Seasons Hall LLC, doing business as Seasons Hall. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Toronto County Commission and other applicable laws. May I have the report from staff?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a liquor license renewal that is dovetailing off of the transfer that took place two weeks ago. This renewal is for the period of January 10th, 2024 through March 31st, 2024, to take it through the current term. Again, it's a full retail liquor license. All the publication requirements have been met, and with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions from the commission? Okay. This time I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the application of renewal of full retail liquor license to approach the lectern. In favor of, yes, sir. If I can get your name and address, please.
Henry Grunenberg, 3421 Dolly Road, Casper. He and I represent Seasons Hall LLC, John Johnson, and we would definitely like to have this thing renewed.
Okay.
For our project.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any other individuals who wish to speak in favor of? All right, at this time I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the application for renewal of full retail liquor license to please approach the lectern. There being no others to speak for or against the application of renewal of full retail liquor license, I now declare the public hearing closed. Have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make motion to approve the application for renewal of liquor license, full retail liquor license to Seasons Hall.
I'll second.
Motion to approve made by Commissioner Milne, second by Commissioner North. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now open it up to public comment. Come on down there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, here in Wayneville, 1427 Horn Church. I was at the Els Lodge the other night, and I overheard a conversation about, and there was three or four involved in this conversation about no fireplace in the trail center. You guys took it out. I was wondering, I just wanted to report to you that there are some people kind of concerned about that. I know budget is budget. I understand that. But I don't know how much would be even interested in putting the fireplace back in the trail center. It's going to be out in the mountains cold, it's snowy. So I just want to... Did you take it out? I don't even know if he took it out.
Terry, I can, unless Jim wants to. So when we looked at the overall cost of the trails center, that fireplace that was going in there was a very substantial amount of money. The way it was being built, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a substantial amount of concrete that had to go into the base of that thing. And then when you built it out, it saved a lot of money by taking it out. Now, I understand people are upset, what's the trail center and the mountain center without having a fireplace in it? But there is a spot for it that we are looking at for future, to put it in in the future. But right now, to get the center built and to come in on budget, it was removed. But there is a spot for it, just not right now.
You know, I've been wondering why people get me involved in something because they know I used to be a person of it all. Anyway, well, so in the future, you say you might get back.
There is a spot for it, and if it was brought up, I'm actually going to let Jim talk a little bit more on this.
So Chairman Frill is absolutely correct on it. During the design portion of it, the fireplace that was going to go in there was a, had some substantial weight to it. And so for the foundation and all that, it just dramatically increased the cost by a lot. The design currently, however, is so that we can upgrade or modify it to put that, put a fireplace in there at a later time. It just won't be the same heavy type. It'll be, it will give, generate heat, it'll have flame, but it won't be the same type of fireplace. But that'll be added later down the road when future commissions want to do that.
This reporting what I heard.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Guys will be all disappointed if I didn't come up here, huh? Rosemary Saban, a Toronto County resident. Lisa Scroggins is supposed to be in here on the 19th for our work session, asking for library funds again. We have voted no. The Business Center, $20,000, $20,000, $25 million budget, and it's over budget. I am not in opposition to repurposing an old building. It's, that's what we should be doing. And the fact that it's gone over budget doesn't surprise me. It's, it's not a great thing. But the library, she can't determine a budget. It hasn't been determined what it, what that's going to cost. So the last thing we need is, is another, another facility that goes over budget. Secondly, the facility she's talking about wanting to have health and job training, we, we pay for those sources currently already. So I'm not sure that a library should be funding that kind of stuff. I've made a couple of recommendations. I guess it doesn't appeal to anybody. There's the Community Health Building is sitting there, going to be vacant. That could be a computer extension for a heck of a lot cost. There's the Village Inn. And then recently, I just saw that that Blue Lace is for sale. That'd be a really cool library. 5,000 square feet, 290, $260,000 it's listed for. $690,000. That's kind of a cool building, Victorian Lace, the blue building on Second Street. I think there's some other options that, that should be looked at instead of just a big fancy new library that's going to cost the taxpayers. Especially when buying that dozer seemed to be a little bit, you know, iffy on the cost of it. How much money has been lost out of those investments accounts from the sale of the hospital? Do we have a number on that or something, somebody can get me?
We've actually started collecting interest as of June this year, and so we're actually.
Going up?
We're actually back where we should be right now, so.
And another option, it kind of, kind of facetious, but it'd be funny. We've got a mall that's struggling. We could put police station and gambling joints and an indoor skate park and a homeless shelter. And then when you get kicked out of one, you can go right where you're supposed to go. It'd be fun that way. Cops wouldn't have to chase you too far. So, anyway, that's what I have. Thank you.
You. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Laird.
A very popular resident of this city died the other day. Bernard Ambrosino, a good friend of mine. He owned Silver Fox Restaurant. I met him when he was 19, when Bill Armour first brought him here from Florida. We've lost some, some other people that I've known for, since junior high as well. And it saddens my heart. Someone sent me a song that I thought was really great. And they sent it to me because their brother-in-law had passed away and they were looking for solace, I would say. And the name of the song is, let me get it real quickly here, of course. The name of the song is by Donna Taggart, and it's called Jealous of the Angels. And the lyrics are such that, that it talks about, she's jealous of the angels because the person who was deceased in her family is now with the angels. Because a lot of people would always like to talk to somebody like that maybe one more time. And so person passes, it's been here a long time, it affects a lot of people. And so I'd just like to have about 20 seconds of silence, Mr. Chairman, for our, for all of our great residents that have passed this year. Thank you all very much.
Sir. Commissioner North.
I had the opportunity to go to a BLM planning meeting a couple of weeks ago discussing the Marton Ranch and how that's going to be developed and what they're looking at. And the expenses going to be associated with that as far as different things. I'm concerned because we did lose property tax base by that, and we're not going to be collecting any additional pelt money because we're already capped out on that. The amount of money that's going to cost to maintain the two county roads that run through that property is going to be astronomical, and we're having difficulty putting gravel on the roads that we currently have. So I did bring that up, and I think that that's something that hopefully that the BLM will look at a lot closer as we move down the road and the development of that so that they can come up with that funding to help stabilize those roads and maintain them. Because right now, people go down them when they're wet and they end up out in sagebrush bouncing around because you can't stay on the road because there's no base. And they don't want that. We don't want that. And we're, like I said, we're going to need them to give us a little bit of assistance in that funding. And hopefully that'll come through. But overall, it was a, it was an informative meeting. I think it was a good meeting, a good start, but there's a long way to go before they really develop that completely.
Commissioner Milne.
So I dropped off those color sheets basically to y'all for the lodge. For the exterior only. The interior still hasn't been decided for colors. That's been decided a couple of different times, a couple of different votes on the different colors. And that's pretty much where we're at, unless somebody has some real heartburn about it. The other portion that I was going to bring up during comments was about the, what WCCA was doing for, to assist us with the ARPA funds to push that back. There's a federal senator, I believe, trying to get some rulemaking completed so that those funds can have an extension for both obligation and usage. That'll, you know, give a little buffer to the Health Department if we need it, if that can go through. That's all I had, though.
Commissioner Nicolason.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Until Friday was Black Friday, then Cyber Monday, and then Giving Tuesday. And I know that a lot of people in the community gave to their community organizations and their churches, and that's great. And today, we heard from a lot of applicants to be appointed to various county boards, Fair Board, Parks Planning and Zoning. There are a whole bunch of others. I was super pleased with the quality of applicants we had, and I'm really thankful that so many people in this community are willing to give their time to, to the public and to the county. And, and I think that it makes for a stronger community in, in every sense. And so I'm thankful for all those applicants, and I think we're going to be able to better serve the public with some, some of these board appointments, and we're going to see some of that in the near future. And so in this holiday season, I just encourage everybody to give your time, talents, and treasure to the best of your abilities, whether it's for community service or churches or other organizations. But, you know, the more you give, the better you feel. So, thank you.
The only thing I had, the CNFR meeting was supposed to be yesterday. However, it's December, and FRS starts actually tomorrow in Las Vegas. So we always forego the month of December, meeting-wise, but we'll meet again first part of January. That's the only comments that I have tonight. A notice of an executive session take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a attorney-client privileged matter and a personnel matter to discuss. Therefore, the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of that executive session, reconvene this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this meeting. Do you have a motion?
No, moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Nicolason, second by Commissioner Milne. There are a majority of commissioners present, and a motion to adjourn into an executive session has been moved and seconded. This motion requires a two-thirds majority of the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?